Hello Hawthorne, I'm your city council member Hader Wad, and welcome to my first virtual town hall event. My goal is to provide you, our residents, with timely information, city updates, and to answer your questions. During the last four years and up to three months ago, I would physically go out to each of Hawthorne's home associations to meet you in person, but obviously that won't work during the pandemic. So I will be holding regular town hall events every second and fourth Thursday of the month, the same week as our council meetings. And I invite you to attend as many of them as you like. In addition, I'll be holding virtual office hours on Facebook and Nextdoor on the first and third Wednesday, Thursday of the month from 12 noon to 1:00 P.M. And lastly, if you need any information on how to get tested, just stay tuned to the very end, and I'll give you every information on how to register and the process of being inputted into the system, as well as the testing itself. Uh, so let's start today's event. Uh, I've spoken to many Hawthorne residents who are confused by the different and changing messages about the COVID-19 response. Messages are coming from different sources, and it can be quite frustrating. So I invited our Los Angeles County Regional Health Officer for the South Bay area to help us and answer some questions. So let me introduce Dr. Sylvia Pareto. Dr. Pareto serves as the Los Angeles County's Regional Health Officer for servicing Planning Areas 7 and 8, which encompasses the southern and eastern portions of Los Angeles County. She serves approximately 3 million residents in those areas. Her vision is to work towards safe and healthy and equitable communities for all residents by partnering with communities, schools, businesses, community-based organizations, and governmental agencies. She obtained her medical degree from UCLA School of Medicine and her master's in public health from UCLA School of Public Health. During her 29 years with the Los Angeles County Department of Health, she has served as area medical director, director of Child Health and Disability Prevention Program, and Director of Bi-National Border Health Program. Let's welcome Dr. Sylvia Pareto.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wad.
Thank you. Now, uh, Dr. Pareto, I know that in the last two days, much has changed regarding reopening in LA County. Will you please tell us what the current status is for Los Angeles County and what safer at home means?
The Safer At Home Order is a legal order released by the Los Angeles County Health Officer to help slow the spread of COVID-19 and to protect the most vulnerable members of our community. The order is in effect until extended, expanded, or updated to protect the health of the public. It is important to understand that although we have made progress in slowing the spread of COVID-19, residents should continue to stay home as much as possible. We must continue to do our part to slow the spread of COVID-19 so that our healthcare system does not become overwhelmed by the drastic increases in cases. The latest update to the Safer At Home Order includes requiring people to remain at home as much as possible, but allowing them to leave their homes for specific activities, including getting healthcare, going to work, getting goods or services from businesses, recreation or being physically active, and caring for vulnerable individuals. People who are 65 years of age or older and people of any age who have underlying health conditions should still only leave their homes for necessities such as food and medical care. The latest order builds on previous health orders and allows for the reopening of houses of worship, offices, in-store shopping at retail establishments, including indoor malls and shopping centers, flea markets, swap meets, and drive-in movie theaters. Also included in the latest update is the opening of pools, hot tubs, and saunas that are in multi-unit residence or are part of a homeowner's association. This, of course, requires compliance with physical distancing and infection control requirements by operators, employers, owners, and the public. There is a lot at stake as we reopen. More people being around one another can result in more transmission of COVID-19, more cases, and likely more hospitalizations and deaths. That is why it couldn't be more important for us to take care of each other when we are out of our homes. Face coverings and physical distancing are required if you are or may be in contact with other people.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, now, residents are very confused because they hear about surrounding counties allowing more businesses like dining restaurants to open. Why isn't Los Angeles County doing the same? And can our residents go to those counties to obtain services?
So each county is determining their roadmap to reopening based on their own data and ensuring that they are continuing to slow the spread of COVID-19. In Los Angeles County, we want to make sure that our plan for recovery is gradual and that proper infection prevention protocols are in place before reopening. We are working with different sectors to ensure that this happens gradually and as safely as possible. While it might be tempting to visit other areas where the rules are more relaxed, it is important to remember that COVID remains a real threat. We must continue to practice physical distancing, washing our hands frequently, and wear a cloth face mask anytime we are around outside of our household.
Now, uh, based on that, can you please explain what the COVID-19 roadmap to recovery is and how fast we will move through the recovery stages?
So the COVID-19 Road to Recovery is a five-stage plan that was developed with the goal of ensuring that we continue to slow the spread of COVID-19 and prevent a surge of cases at healthcare facilities, while allowing for a gradual, safe return of some activities outside of the home, such as work and recreation. Through each stage, we need to continue to follow guidance that prevents COVID-19 from spreading, including practicing social or physical distancing, wearing cloth face coverings in public settings, washing our hands frequently, and isolating and self-quarantine as indicated.
Now, what public sites and businesses will be open under the Safer At Home Order? And what type of public sites and businesses will remain closed?
All businesses defined as essential businesses, essential infrastructure, and healthcare operations can be open so long as they follow the Health Officer Order. Because we are in stage two of the roadmap to recovery, lower-risk retail businesses are also being allowed to reopen, but they must follow the physical distancing and infection control requirements to keep workers and customers safe. Example of these are parks, walking and hiking trails, beaches for active in recreation, golf courses, tennis courts, bike paths, community gardens. Um, also, lower-risk stores such as bookstores, jewelry stores, furniture stores, toy stores, and clothing stores. These businesses may bring people into close contact for longer periods of time and include a movie theater, bowling alleys, personal grooming establishment like hair and nail salons and barber shops, bars and nightclubs that don't serve food, public pools, gyms, theme parks. Um, these others are higher risk and will not be opened at this time.
Now, with all these sites being opened, um, you know, they, their residents are telling me here if they're supposed to be wearing masks or gloves as they're walking into these establishments. Uh, now, what steps, um, to prevent the spread of COVID-19 am I required and as well as the residents are required to follow?
So the, the most important thing is always try to maintain at least six feet of physical distance from individuals who are not part of your household. And you also want to wear a cloth face covering when you're in contact with anybody, um, again, who isn't part of your, um, household. Uh, wash your hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds or use a hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. And avoid physical interaction outside of your household when you are sick with a fever or cough, except for necessary medical care.
Now, I have some specific questions from our residents. Uh, you may have answered some of these or touched on them, but I want to give our Hawthorne residents a chance to ask their questions. Um, we have several questions about homes and immediate family. One of our questions is, do I have to perform social or physical distancing with members of my own household or family?
No, you do not have to stay six feet from people who live in the same household or living unit with you. But if you are ill, you should try to remain in a separate room. And if you can, if you have a, a separate bathroom from everyone else in the home, uh, you should use that. If not, uh, you want to use, if you want to clean the bathroom as much as possible after every use.
Thank you for that. Uh, our next question is, are individual and family gatherings at home allowed?
Gatherings and events of any, um, kind are still not permitted. The virus hasn't changed. It's still relatively easy to become infected. So you should not have visitors other than people who provide essential services like caregivers or repairmen into your home. Connect with families and friends through phone calls and social media. Being together from a distance, although temporary, is the new normal. Protect them and protect yourself.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, our next question comes in. Uh, can I still take care of a family member, friend, or pet at their home or residence, which is different than mine?
Yes, of course. You can provide care for vulnerable and dependent people or animals. However, you should take precautions to protect them and yourself, such as being sure that you don't have a fever or symptoms of illness before leaving to provide care. Keep, again, at least six feet from others whenever possible. Wear a face covering or a surgical mask if you're caring for ill individuals and frequently washing your hands.
Thank you. Uh, our next question comes in here. Uh, can I take a family member or friend to their doctor's appointment or shopping?
Yes, as much as possible. Again, you wanted to keep the physical distancing from those that aren't a part of your family or, or household.
Uh, our next question comes in as, can a repair person such as a plumber, uh, come to fix a problem in my home?
Yes, you can continue to get the services that are needed to maintain the safety and sanitation of your home. Again, as much as possible, you want them to stay, um, uh, do not come in if they're ill. And if they are, when they're inside, they should also be wearing a face mask and staying six feet or more as much as possible.
Now, uh, kind of touching on that, in the news lately, you've seen, um, a lot of nursing home facilities and hospitals come in as a potential hotspots, uh, you know, for family members that are there and for who they want to visit, uh, their immediate family members. Uh, one resident asked, can I visit my family member in the hospital or in a skilled nursing facility? And if so, what precautionary procedures should I take when visiting?
Yeah, unfortunately, face-to-face visits are not allowed at licensed congregate healthcare facilities, such as skilled nursing facilities and residential care facilities, except if you're visiting a child or for end-of-life visits. This is to protect patients and residents, visitors, and healthcare personnel. Outside of the pediatric and end-of-life visits, please use other ways to communicate with loved ones, such as telephone calls, texts, and video chats.
Thank you for that answer. Uh, another resident wants to know, uh, if we can go to the dentist, and I'll add, can people go to any health checkup at this time?
So it turns out that dental services pose a higher risk for the spread of COVID-19. So only emergency care and certain non-emergency dental care, um, is allowed to be provided. Speak to your dentist to find out what services are available. Clinics and other healthcare facilities are also open at this time. Please call ahead to your provider to make an appointment and learn about their appointment protocol.
Thank you. Um, now, the, another question we just recently got in. Can you get reinfected again from the COVID-19 virus?
So that's a somewhat difficult question to answer because we don't really know. As you know, this is a new virus. We keep learning about it. Um, at this time, we do not think that you can get, um, reinfected. What we have found is that some people are persistently shedding, um, the virus. And in fact, it may not be even alive, but they continue to, um, shed it. So that's why they might test positive again and again.
That's quite interesting. Um, let's see, we have another one here. Uh, many of our residents are asking about returning to work. Um, here are a few questions on that subject. How can I protect myself if I must go to work?
We understand that many members of our communities have to go to work, especially if they work for essential businesses. So you can go to work as long as you follow the physical distancing traveling to and from work and while you are at work. But remember, if you are sick, do not go to work. Businesses also must follow requirements related to infection control and physical distancing. Your employer should have a plan for rearranging the work site to allow employees to keep a safe distance from each other and customers by either, um, providing alternate work schedules or from allowing you to work from home.
Now, when transporting, uh, or heading into work, um, can the residents take public transportation or use ride-sharing services like Lyft or Uber?
Um, so, remember, you should only travel outside of your home as necessary. But if it is necessary, you can take public transportation or use ride-sharing services as long as you wear a face covering during your ride and at stops and station where other people are present and that you stay, again, six feet or more from those who aren't part of your household.
Now, and I know as a lot of, uh, parents are out there, you know, dealing with their, both their kids during the school shutdown and trying to go back to work. Um, with their children, uh, can they go back to childcare?
Yes, childcare facilities, um, remain open as long as they follow the described, um, uh, requirement in the Health Officer Order. So the childcare should, um, be carried out with a group of, uh, 10 or fewer children. And that means that they should stay in that same group the whole time and not change from one group to another.
Thank you for that. Uh, now, Dr. Pareto, as we're heading into the summer, uh, is it safe to go to the beach or the park or to even go on some type of vacation?
We're all waiting to go on vacation. But yes, it is, um, you can go to the park, but you should stay, uh, away from those who aren't part of your, uh, family. Um, remember that, um, indoor and outdoor playgrounds and pools at parks though remain closed. The beaches are now open, but only in limited way to give residents more options for what's called active recreation. That means you can't just be on the beach, um, having a, um, uh, cooler and enjoying the sun. It has to be for active recreation. Um, so that's only swimming, surfing, biking, running, and walking. Uh, gatherings of any size or any other events are not allowed on the beach. Unfortunately, that includes, uh, beach volleyball. So you should avoid areas that are crowded, um, and stay away from those that aren't your family members. Do not share food or beverages with people who are not part of your household. And it, you should travel outside, um, your area only if it's essential or necessary, such as to take care of someone with or after-death arrangements. All non-essential travel should be avoided.
Well, that, that kind of, uh, puts things in perspective. Um, now, how about going to the gym or a fitness center or even a public pool?
Yeah, I hate to say it, but right now, uh, gyms, fitness centers, public pools, hot tubs, and saunas are all closed. Um, only in pools, hot tubs, and saunas that are located inside an apartment or condominium complex can be open, um, at this time.
Oh, wow. Uh, so, so basically going out and, and taking the jog around the neighborhood or at a track, is that still safe as long as we're practicing social distancing and using our masks?
Yes, it's important for us to get fresh air. It's good for us physically as well as mentally, um, to have a change of scenery.
Um, now, now that we're slowly returning to some type of normalcy, um, people are asking specific questions about certain services. Uh, can I do my laundry at a laundromat?
Yes, again, that's, um, okay. Again, you just want to practice the physical distancing.
Can I buy pet food or have my pet groomed?
Sure, you should be able to go in and buy your supplies for your pet. Um, also have them groomed at a veterinary clinic or, um, even, uh, the mobile pet grooming is also allowed.
You know, uh, still on this topic of pets, uh, there, there have been some news articles and a lot of residents asking, um, can your pet attract, uh, contract the disease and could they pass it along to you yourself?
Yeah, we, we know that for sure dogs and cats can get COVID-19. It's still not clear, um, did they get it, uh, or, uh, did they give it to a family member or how did they get it? So we're not sure. So the most important thing is that if you go out with your, um, uh, dog or cat, make sure, and even a cat should be on a leash if you're going to take him outside. If not, they should just remain indoors. That way they are not in contact with any other animals or, for that matter, any other person. Uh, unfortunately, some people like to come up and pet your, um, animal when you're out for a walk, and that really is, uh, should be discouraged at all times.
Thank you. Uh, our next question is, um, are beauty salons and barber shops, uh, open now?
Currently, they aren't. However, we did ask the state for what's called a variance, and we hope to hear soon, maybe in a day or two. They're doing everything they can to expedite these. And if so, then as soon as we hear, we will let everyone know, um, that they are open. Um, and you'll be able to as soon as they feel that they are ready.
Oh, so that's one thing I can't wait for. I, I can kind of use a haircut now, especially with the, the longer we stay in this sort of a shutdown. Uh, it's getting a little untamable. The next question is, can I go shopping at malls and other retail stores?
The good news is, yes, the health, the latest Health Officer Order does allow for the reopening of in-store shopping at retail establishments, including indoor malls and shopping center, flea markets, and swap meets. Uh, we will again, uh, urge you to wear a cloth face covering and keep your social distancing while shopping.
Now, how about restaurants? Are they beginning to slowly reopen, um, or are they only going to be doing curbside pickup and, uh, takeout?
So right now, the only thing that's allowed is the curbside pickup. But again, this was one of the, uh, three areas that we asked the state to, uh, for variants. And it was for hair salon, barber shop, and in, in restaurant dining. And so as soon as we hear, we're going to be, um, updating our Health Officer Order, um, on our website so that, um, hopefully, um, maybe definitely before, I would expect in the next two or three days that we will be able to return to our favorite restaurants and enjoy a good meal. However, there will be some, uh, modifications. They can only be at 50% of their capacity. And there, uh, a whole list of rules that they must follow. But, um, definitely, we expect them to be open soon.
That's great. Uh, you know, we have an interesting question that, uh, came in now. Um, if the state approves their variants, uh, will that allow the beaches and splash pads open as well?
So again, the beaches are only open for active recreation. Um, that, the variants will not allow that to change. Um, this just goes by stages, and we only can do variances within the stage. So this is stage two. So we, that would be the maximum that will, um, be allowed. So for instance, um, nail salons are part of stage three. So there's no way to get a variance, uh, to change that. However, it shouldn't be too much longer before the other stages start to open up.
Now, what does that look like for us as the state of California to attain those other stages?
Um, is your question on what, how do we obtain those?
Yeah, and, and then how close are we to moving?
How do we move through them? Yeah, so each county can potentially move at slightly different, um, speeds. We're trying to align ourselves up with the state of California, um, with Governor Newsom. As he, uh, opens up other areas, we will hopefully be able to follow unless there's a special reason why, um, Los Angeles County cannot. Uh, but basically, what we're looking at is we're making sure that the number of cases isn't going up and, uh, likewise, the number of deaths, um, are not increasing at an alarming rate. Um, we did have early on, um, some issues with deaths, especially associated with, um, Smiths, with the skilled nursing facilities, and that seems to have, um, improved a lot.
Now, as we're trying to progress from stage two to three to four, um, now, if the deaths start to mount or the, uh, cases start to increase, do we scale back or what does that scenario look like if, if we're going into stage three from two and there is a huge wave of, uh, new cases?
Again, it will depend on how big of a wave is our healthcare system being overwhelmed. Do we have enough ventilators? Are ICU beds at, uh, maximum capacity? Where are we? How bad is it? And so the Health Officer will make the determination, uh, whether we just, uh, kind of freeze where we are or if in fact we have to go back a stage. Our hope is that, um, we won't have to go backwards, but it's hard to, uh, predict totally. If you look at, um, other pandemics and in other countries, unfortunately, the second wave can be worse than the first wave. So we really have to, um, just continue to, um, only go out when it's essential and practice all the things that we've talked about time and time again, um, to keep ourselves and our family, especially those that are older and have some, um, vulnerabilities as far as medically, um, so that they do not come down with COVID-19.
Thank you for that answer. Uh, and I know, I know we're kind of running a little short on time, especially for yourself. Uh, but there is a, um, an interesting topic that, um, I think if you could touch on it, that'd be great. Um, what does returning back to school, uh, timeline look like? Um, and if they do reopen schools, uh, one resident asks, am I forced to take my kids to school? Once they open the school, how safe can they be kept from being almost 300 students out of school?
Yeah, that's still, um, you know, some, a work in progress. The, however, uh, there was some guidance that came out today. We think that it's going to be, um, maximum, I think, and they said no more than 16 students per class. Um, it's going to be a combination of, um, distance learning, much have, have they been doing now, um, trying to use alternate space where the kids can be spread out a little bit more. So it, it'll depend a lot, I think, on the school district, on how, how much of these, um, new, um, standards they can, um, implement. Um, in terms of will they, will your child have to go to school? Um, I, I think everybody has the right to homeschool their children if they, uh, decide to. So I don't see that changing.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that question. Um, now, the, the last, and that's the pressing one, is all this talk about a vaccine coming in within the next few months, um, and that being pushed out to the public. Uh, i- is there a vaccine coming in this quickly? Uh, is, uh, the realistic timeframe of a vaccine, uh, what does that look like?
So it's hard, again, to know exactly. Um, uh, the vaccine that everybody, um, that you've heard a lot on the news, it actually was a very, very small sample. I believe it was only like 20 people who got it. Um, so, you know, um, realistically, um, I, I would very much doubt that we can have a vaccine, um, available before the end of the year. Um, then the second thing will be, are people going to want to, uh, be vaccinated with it? And, um, according to some of the surveys that I've seen, there's a lot of resistance from some people to, um, probably because it'll be a new and unknown vaccine. What I can recommend is that everybody make sure they have all their vaccinations up to date, especially, um, when, uh, September, October, when the flu vaccine becomes available. Because, um, it'll be very hard for us to know in the fall if somebody has a cough, fever, runny nose, do they have the flu or is it COVID-19? Plus, in those cases where somebody might have both, we, uh, think that it's going to be a lot worse because both, um, really attack the lungs. And so to have double damage, so to speak, to your lungs. is going to be really hard for even somebody who's young and healthy to really not have any bad outcomes. So again, all I can say is try to continue to take care of yourself. You know, practice the physical distancing and get all your immunizations up to date.
Well, thank you, Dr. Prieto. On behalf of those participating in today's town hall and on behalf of the entire city of Hawthorne, I want to thank you for taking your valuable time to be with us today and answering so many questions on a wide array of topics. I cannot thank you and your team enough for what you've done to keep us safe and healthy during this pandemic. Hopefully, in the near future, you can come as my guest to an in-person city council meeting where we can express our gratitude for your leadership. But again, thank you for being here and helping us out through this pandemic.
Thank you.
Now, for everyone else, please stay on the town hall as I give you an update on the city side. First, let me give you an update on the Hawthorne COVID-19 testing center. It's open to everyone with or without symptoms. The test is free, but no insurance is needed. At the testing facility, there is a Spanish translator onsite that would help guide individuals through the whole procedure as well as getting themselves signed up. You will need to make an appointment. And we can provide all that information at the end of this video of which website to go to. There's also instruction videos that I've produced and sent out just to show the residents how unintrusive these testing centers are and how the testing will proceed forward. Now, as we just heard from Dr. Prieto about reopening in Los Angeles County, to give you an update on Hawthorne, Hawthorne is following the county's guidelines and protocols. And I encourage you to visit our local businesses once they're open. As the reopening progresses, I will send out information by email and post information on my website. So please sign up at haterhawthorne.com. Now, there's been a lot of questions regarding street sweeping from the residents. Many residents are eager for our streets to be cleaned after two months of sweepers moving around parked cars. As of last week, parking enforcement for street sweeping days has resumed. Right now, vehicles will receive a warning, but eventually vehicles will be ticketed and towed in a few weeks. So please keep mindful of the day and time posted on your street. Regarding trash rates, I know a lot of residents have had issues just even making their regular payment for trash. Unfortunately, this past Tuesday, the city council took up a request by our trash hauler to increase fees. I want you to know that I voted against raising the trash fees since so many people are dealing with financial insecurity. In fact, most utility companies have graciously given a moratorium on payments during the crisis. But unfortunately, the remaining council passed the fee increase four to one. So the fees will increase starting the middle of June. Over the last three city council meetings, I proposed redirecting my council salary and the council members' allocation to help residents. Although I haven't taken a city council salary since being elected in 2015, I've directed the city to reallocate those funds to purchase masks for residents or any other use that benefits the health and safety of our residents. On Tuesday, we took the final step to make this happen. As soon as we move forward on masks, I will let you all know. There's also been some talk about further information regarding the eviction moratorium. So I'm very proud to announce that my eviction moratorium ordinance passed and now is in full effect for residential and commercial renters. If you have problems paying rent due to illness or financial hardship due to COVID-19, you need to inform your landlord and keep documentation that you did and that you have hardships. The moratorium will be in effect 30 days past the date that the stay-at-home order is lifted. If you have received an eviction notice, please call the Housing Rights Center at 1-800-477-5977. Now, if there's any questions or residents that are still watching or participants, if you can, or if you're able to type along, if you have any questions now, I'm open to answer anything. As we wait for those questions to come in, I also wanted to announce that the Hawthorne will have a balanced city budget for 2020 and 2021 without significant cuts. My finance oversight committee has made Hawthorne financially secure over the last four years, so much so that we are able to weather this big storm while unfortunately, other cities aren't. Now, before I start taking these questions that are coming in, I want to let you know that if you have any needs or questions about resources, just dial 211 for the county's public helpline. It's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and someone will get you exactly what you need. Let's see, the first question comes in. What are the effective dates for the eviction moratorium ordinance? Now, as the county's stay-at-home order ends at the end of May, ours will, the city of Hawthorne's eviction moratorium will begin on May 31st for 30 days. After that, residents will have six months up to December to pay back all of the rent that they weren't able to pay during the COVID-19 pandemic. It's not rent forgiveness, so you do have to work with your landlord in order to create some kind of payment program. But you will have up to December to get everything back on track. Let's see, the next question is, can your rent be increased during the pandemic? Luckily, the state passed a rent increase, rent control a few months ago. So during the pandemic, it will be very difficult and actually unlawful for them to be increasing your rent as there has been a rent controls issued by the state already. Is the park being monitored since skate park has many kids without masks? That's a very good question. Regarding the parks and the skate parks, yes, we're monitoring them. But the issue is, is as we have our code enforcement go back into the streets and helping push the city forward, unfortunately, as you push these kids out at the skate park, they'll still come in. And it's very difficult to enforce that kind of protocol or that kind of action onto residents trying to use the park and things of that nature. Hi there. The next one comes in. Will there will all fireworks become illegal in Hawthorne like other South Bay cities? And another question that connects to it is, I'm wondering what can be done about legal fireworks that are terrorizing us day in and day out? Yeah, that is correct. It has been a little bit more aggressive this year especially. You're starting to hear them from Memorial Day up all the way until 4th of July and then a couple of weeks after. I do agree that is becoming a major nuisance. It has been before. So at the next council meeting, I'll be directing our city attorney to place on the agenda to begin the process of having fireworks completely banned or having just one area designated on the 4th of July where residents could come together and shoot off fireworks, almost like a fireworks show, but on one day, 4th of July, within a specific time period. When is the city of Hawthorne going to have parking permits again? You know, that's a very good question. Parking has been a serious issue within the city of Hawthorne and one that takes a lot of a lot of foresight and a lot of plan to take, to address. We're looking at bringing back parking permits after we're dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic now. Unfortunately, as we begin to move forward and as the city begins to grow, it is going to be quite difficult to address having a solution to parking. No other city really has a one-fit solution or one-size-fit-all for a parking issue. But for parking permits, we are studying it. We want to find a different way of using that code to help the residents, but at the same time, not hurt the other streets that are adjacent to it. Because you tend to see that when there are streets with parking permits, well, either they don't use them or the issue would be they would just leave it empty. So we do want to find a way to address it, bringing back parking permits and finding a protocol where you won't need as many residential signatures on the form, but another way of informing the residents of that block or side street that this is going into effect. Any data from the COVID-19 test results completed at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center? Is this exclusive for Hawthorne residents? The COVID-19 testing center, the one I brought here to Hawthorne, is part of Gavin Newsom's task force. He wanted to open 80 testing centers, working with OptumServe. They're walk-in facilities, so not drive-through, to increase the testing and to kind of get us the adequate numbers so we can start moving from phase two, three, four, and five. It's not only exclusive to Hawthorne, it's for the entire LA County region. So if you know anyone that wants to get tested or want to get tested yourself, by all means, please sign up and go. For the data regarding how many are tested and are positive rates, that is also online on the county website. If you go to the county and click on COVID-19, they'll give you a spreadsheet of all the testing centers, how many have been tested and how many have, how many positive cases from those centers have come out. Another, how many residents in Hawthorne contracted COVID? Specifically, in what areas? And do we know new cases daily? So for new cases daily, yes, when the reports come in. It does take two to three days to have the exams processed. But yes, we do have, let me make sure. Yes, all those numbers are online. To date now, we're hovering around 360, 370 positive cases. Now, again, today, the numbers from the testing center from today will be inputted as just test only. But of course, the results from two days ago will be inputted this evening. So hopefully, it will not be increasing. But yeah, all that's on the LA County website. But we are, as we start to see the city and state reopen, it is inevitable that we're going to have a spike in increases. But as long as we can just control that itself and then find a way to just get those individuals help and then necessary medication and treatment, we will still be able to progress forward and reopen. It just helps us find what residents and where they are and to help them quickly get treatment and have them off of being able to spread it. Next question we have is, when will the street sweeping resume? As I mentioned before, the city code enforcement is now going out. They're giving out warning tickets. So if you do see a ticket on your dashboard regarding street sweeping, know that is not something you have to pay now. That is just a warning to kind of give you an idea of when we're going to begin. Within the next couple of, they're starting street sweeping now. So just be cognizant of what your street sign says, what time you must move your vehicle. And this way, we can get the streets up and cleaned and hopefully not have any more trash on the streets. But really, it's really trying to just get the residents, the city back to some kind of normal state and really getting all this trash off. Another question is, also, how can we speak during city council meetings and guarantee residents can be heard? If we can speak, will we be called in to speak live and not have emails read? Yes, there are two ways to speak during the council meeting. So if you go onto the city website, you will have our city council meetings, their dates and our agendas. Now, as you click on the Zoom meeting, you will be able to watch the meeting on YouTube. Now, there is a dial-in number for you to call in live. So yes, when you do call in, the city clerk will take your name down and then you will be put on speaker to speak to the council regarding your question if you would not want to send in the email as well. But please go on to the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. Make sure to go on the city's halls website. Take the number down and call no later than 5:30 just to have your time slot and name inputted so that we can call you back and have you speak live to us in the council and answer any questions you might have during the council meeting. Are you looking into extensive timeframe to getting building permits from the city? Luckily now, what we've done is because of the whole pandemic, we've restructured city hall to be more on a digital platform. So not only can you submit your plans now to building and safety through an online portal, you can also pay your fines and fees. You can also ask for special permits regarding special events or even block parties or anything like that, all online. So please go to the cityofhawthorne.com and whatever you're trying to address or handle can all be taken online now. Another question we have here. When they report numbers, is it reported by city they live in or center where they test? For the, the numbers coming in, so when, after every day, when they get that batch of numbers, the tally goes to one where they went to be tested, so the city of Hawthorne. But when it comes to being positive or negative and things of that nature, it goes to the city that they reside in. So that, just if you were tested positive and you use the Hawthorne Testing Center, for example, that positive wouldn't be counted towards our count. It would be counted towards whatever city that they're, whatever city they reside in. We have another, when will city hall offices be open to the public? What about attending city council meetings? When will commission meetings resume? So we're following the county guidelines on how soon we can open up city hall to the residents. We are looking within the month of June to have our doors reopened to the public. Now, when it comes to having live council meetings, I believe they're still trying to have us host Zoom meetings because we still can't have more than 10 individuals in a room. So it'll be very difficult to conduct live council meetings and only allow five people from the public inside. So having the Zoom meetings for the residents, again, just call in, email. It's relatively easy to get ahold of us and to have public comment. Please do not be afraid of calling in. It's, on my website, I'll be placing the link and phone number prior to every council meeting. This way, as long as you go to haterhawthorne.com, to make it easier, it'll be on the front page. All you have to do is every second and fourth Thursday, just dial that number and ask to be on public comment. But please do it prior to 5:30. The next question comes in. I would like to know what the city has planned to battle the rampant abuse. Oh, we've crashed that one. The fireworks, the next council meeting. Given what we have experienced during COVID, will there be future planning for rent control in Hawthorne? Especially since once the rent moratorium is over, money's owed will have to be paid in full over six months. Not a lot of time by renters affected. Yeah, a lot of residents, as you've seen in the news, our unemployment rate is rising rapidly. And as I do agree, only six months is quite difficult to have everything paid in full. The state is looking into a few measures, especially one from Senator Steve Bradford, where I'm hoping if it does pass, will increase and kind of help the renters, especially and landlords that have fallen on some financial hardships during this pandemic. So check your emails, check my website over the next couple of weeks. As it's going through committees, I will inform the public as soon as we're given any notice of what it was passed. And prior to that, I'll also be pushing alongside Senator Steve Bradford to get that bill pushed forward. What can we do regarding the trash during this time? The trash is Uh, what can we do regarding the trash during this time? The trash is more than usual. Is there any way that they can pass twice in a week and a day? I hope you understand what I mean. Uh, yeah, when, when the pandemic first started, um, there were a lot of residents that were defaulting on their, their trash bill. Um, and, and it was astounding to see just how many. Uh, so we, we started coming out, I would go out to the community and city staff as well. Trying to help, you know, take the trash bins out into the streets for seniors as well as addressing to Republic Service. Of can you forgive, uh, at least for the next month or so during the beginning of March, uh, for the residents that are in default? Uh, and fortunately, that wasn't, um. They were able to pick up the trash, uh, to increase the amount of uh drive-bys or pass-throughs. Uh, they themselves were going through financial hardship that they were on a skeleton crew. So the one-time pass uh was basically all they were able to do. I, I know at one point they stopped doing the bulk pickups as well. Um, and that was because they were just losing staff left and right. Uh, I've asked Republic to see if they can, at least for the meantime, until we kind of get our city back on its feet, to do a few extra passes. Um, we're still negotiating back and forth. Um, but yeah, I'll address that the next council meeting and see if we can have some more trash up pickups uh made for our residents. The next question comes in. Are youth sports allowed to go back to practice as long as they absorb social distancing? And PPEs provided on the field. Youth athletes are really looking forward to have an opportunity to enjoy their practice. Even if they're not able to have games, hence avoiding physical contact. Um, that is a very good question to have. Uh, and as Dr. Prieto has mentioned, and especially to kind of combat depression, all the stress. Being outside and being active is crucial um for our health and well-being. Uh, when it comes to youth sports. Uh, you, it, you can begin to have them outside and, and playing, but you still have to follow. The strict protocols of social dis- distancing, uh, especially with the PPE requirements. Um. Now, it depending on what youth sports that you're talking about regarding if it's through a school district or separate. Um, why don't you give me a call on uh my cellphone and leave your name? Um, and that way I can address it for you. If you can give me some more detail, uh, that'll be great. Let me just make sure I get. Last one are coming in here. Yes, we have all these mechanic shops taking their cars out in the street. They leave the cars at. I have another resident asking about the fireworks. If, if you just came in towards the end, um, as I mentioned to the. During the beginning of the meeting, um, I will be placing this item on the next council uh meeting agenda uh to have fireworks. Uh, be banned within the city, um, or at least have it for one specific. Just for this Fourth of July, one day at one location during a specific time period. Um, where residents can celebrate the Fourth of July, but in a safe and humane manner. Uh, there are, have been cities that have done the same thing where they allow. At one of the parks or one of the city facilities from X time to X. That you're allowed to come with your family, shoot off fireworks. But anytime beyond that or before that timeframe, uh, it has been deemed illegal. So I will be trying to do the same thing at our next council meeting. Uh, I'll be asking for your support, just how I did for the eviction moratorium. So if we can get that rolling through, hopefully, uh, we can have a quieter year uh compared to all the previous ones. Let's see. Looks like. Oh, uh, is, if there's any other question, it looks like we've taken. Oh, uh, so there will be rent control in Hawthorne after the pandemic. Um, again, the state of California issued its own um rent control uh across the entire state. Uh, when it comes to Hawthorne. Uh, now we just have the eviction moratorium. Uh, discussions have come up regarding uh whether or not uh the city itself should have a rent control. Uh, but on the state's side, uh, they had a very aggressive rent control that was blanketed to the entire, to each individual city. Um, but there are talks regarding that, especially during this pandemic. Uh, you have a high unemployment rate, a lot of residents are hurting. Um, any kind of leeway or help we can give our residents is, we're pushing. Um, but, but that is a discussion we're having now to find a way to ease the burden on not only renters, but as well as the landlords themselves. Uh, so that they can continue making their mortgage payments while their tenants are making their rent payments. Uh, then the last question we have here is, can you please provide your cellphone? Uh, yes, I'll do that for you guys now, and this way, again, just contact me uh either. Text, email, or even a phone call. Uh, if you have any other further questions or you did not feel comfortable asking them online today. Uh, again, feel free to ask me anytime. Uh, my cellphone is three one oh four one eight five nine five five. Again, that's three one oh four one eight five nine five five. And before I sign off, as we're, time's kind of up, uh, the last question that came in was regarding, uh. No one wants to see people out on, out of their homes. In addition to protecting renters, what are you doing to advocate for landlords who are still having to pay? The mortgage, who are under threat of losing their home? Um, as I mentioned before, uh, there is a, uh, I'm working with the state legislature now. And uh, our Senator Steve Bradford on a bill that will not only help address uh renters that are. Finding financial hardship during this time, but in addition to the landlords themselves. We're hoping within a few weeks that that will get passed through. Um, it is well-needed, it, it's needed to help the residents, uh, both landlords and um renters. It's looking very promising, and I'll have the information of what that bill looks like. Uh, and how soon it can get enacted on my website, uh, for all of you to read and look into. Uh, but it has plenty of teeth and uh momentum that I believe landlords and renters alike would. Be happy that this was pushed through by our state legislator. Well, again, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out here today, um, enjoying this, uh, our first virtual town hall. Uh, it'll become a lot smoother as we're going through. Um, but yes, again, feel free to give me a call or email or whatever the case might be. Um, make sure to go on the haterhawthorne.com for COVID nineteen information. As well as how to sign up for our testing center and all the instructional videos that we've made on how the procedure. Um, how to get signed up and how the testing procedure uh goes. Again, I appreciate all of you coming back today, and um, if you have any questions again, please feel free to give me a call.